A confirmation of reporting is in progress.
Okay, thank you, air conditioner. Okay, this is the infield planning board. It's Wednesday, June 26, 2024. We are in the infield EPW facility and also on the team's virtual platform. I'm David Frack and I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:31. Planning Board members present from my left.
Linda Jones.
Eric Russell.
Tim Jennings.
Brad Rich.
Hey, staff members.
Fox Hiller.
Whitney Baker.
Okay, Whitney, I think we'll elevate you to a voting member tonight, should there be anything to vote on. Without objection, I think we're going to change the agenda order a little bit because I see that our consultants Steve Whitman and Mark Fochel are here. And let's get right to the hot graph. So Steve, do you want to facilitate the conversation?
I'm happy to. Thanks, David. Okay, you have a couple other people coming in. So we recognize you haven't had a lot of time with this packet, I'm guessing. And there's a lot in here. And so what Mark and I talked about trying to do with you all tonight is to move through what's here. Collect feedback where we can, flag things that you want to think about. We still have another meeting with you all on the 24th of July, if you still have that meeting date open. So we're running close to the end, but we're not at the end yet. So we feel comfortable if we don't get 100% clarity on each item. But if we can move through this whole packet, so we can come back to you ahead of the next meeting with a revised packet. And maybe some additional materials, that's the goal. So.
That would be, before we start, I'd like to remind our guests to sign in. I see they're doing. Okay, back to you, Steve.
All right. Is that possible to display the packet?
Do you have it handy, Rob?
I did the other night. See here, hold on a second.
You have copies of how many pages?
It's quite a few pages.
It's a lot.
Yeah, that's why I didn't.
The part that's a lot, though, is the last, we gave you a couple of stormwater ordinances in the back, and those really added up the pages.
The May buys probably 10, 10 pages, and then it's stormwater, it goes on.
Right.
On and on.
I have it handy if I can screen share for you, Rob. I'm happy to. I'm just not sure.
Yeah, why don't you do that?
Where do I?
He's got to get it off of his office computer. So why don't you screen share, Steve?
All right, how do I do that on Teams?
Stand if I know.
I don't know if it's allowed as a participant.
Well, you have to be allowed. I know that.
So if Rob could grant me permission, maybe I'll get a tool. I can see all the tools.
Did he rock? Did he go to his office?
Yeah, but Whitney's trying to figure it out.
Huh. Oh, how about this button that says share?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's a good one.
I thought it said save, so.
Okay, there's a share invite. I guess if we hit that with the, we'll be able to see it.
I think I can get to everything now. I think I'm there. All right, so. Do you see a map?
Yeah, good.
Yeah, right.
I can no longer see, I can no longer see any of you, so don't make any faces. I can just see my slides. So the first thing we wanted to do is our recollection at the last meeting was we, when we talked about the village district, which is the purple area in the north western corner, there was some opposition to the kind of maple and may section of that. We just want to edit the map to the best of our ability for your benefit. You can continue to make changes going forward, but I want to give you as good a map as we can. So I circled that area and then there was a conversation about maybe expanding the conservation district closer to Route 4 and a few locations and along 89. They took a stab at what those might be. If others can correct us or if somebody can commit to sending us a marked up map, we can update this.
Yeah.
Steve, I think you meant Route 4A.
Yeah, I did. Thank you.
We will commit to marking up a map and sending it to you by Friday.
Awesome. That's perfect. All right, we can move on to the next one. Is that good? We, you received ahead of the last meeting, kind of the initial findings from the forum, and then we sent the complete results. They didn't change too much, although we did hear from a bunch of additional people that didn't attend one of the forums. I just wanted to pause if anyone had any questions about those. Let's see, that would be this. Were there any questions or comments anyone wanted to touch on related to any of the feedback? I don't want to gloss over it.
It seemed like a lot of the feedback was conflicting, like when I went through it, that you could see both sides being present, going back and forth, depending on the issue. I don't know if anybody else felt that way.
Yep.
We found, Steve, we found that true also for the questions relating to the master plan. And when we met on Monday, we felt there was a lack of context and a lack of who was making what comment. Sure. I don't, I don't know if you have any demographic data that you could attach, but that was just one of the, one of the themes that came through on our master plan task force meeting.
Okay, I mean, related to the zoning specific comments. I think it was probably most important, as we talked about last time, that there was a lot of support for the village district, although some people had some concerns. And we'll kind of table the lake shore until we talk about that one. But I think we also saw that there just wasn't the interest in the R1 to R3, and you decided to kind of pause on that because of this one last time. I think for our purposes here, this was in, it was an initial conversation and there were people who were generally in favor and wanted to know more and needed more context, as you're saying. And I think you'll be able to give that to them with the items we're going over tonight. All right. So to the other deliverables, I'll just go through the packet. Does everybody have a copy of these in front of them?
We don't.
No.
That's, that's why we wanted you to put it on.
Let me make them bigger. And what I'll do is what maybe Mark and I will highlight some of these for you to touch on some of the big changes that have happened. And then just stop us at any point, David, because I can't see people in the room. I can't see if they're waving their hands for a chance. So for the village district, the district purpose is largely the same as what we've been working with. What I guess I would highlight is under permitted uses. We have the single family dwellings, duplexes, triplexes, workforce housing, housing multifamily, manufactured homes, accessory dwelling units. And then the non-residential uses are broadly commercial, light industrial, research, development, churches and places of formal worship. The other part of this is conditional uses. I believe for this area, you already had wireless towers. Through it, through a special exception, probably for this area. So we suggested that could be through a conditional use permit through the planning board. But in some of the other towns that have had a form-based code, you're kind of moving a little bit back from a form-based code. But this reduced broader set of permitted uses is very form-based code-like. We often will use a condition to use permit for other uses. So if there's a question about whether a use is compatible with the district purpose, you can use the conditional use process to review that. And so we've suggested that we give you a conditional use permit for that. So that you'd have that flexibility to clarify, make sure it's going to fit in with the district. Mark, anything you want to add to that?
Nope, right on.
So questions?
Can you blow that up a bit?
Yeah.
I read those.
I know, it's got to be hard. Let me keep blowing it up. And slide, is that better?
Yes. Yeah, scroll up to the top, please.
Oh, you want to see the top top?
Oh, no, the.
The district purpose, yeah.
Jim, if you want to slide over here, I've got it. I'm on it too.
You, if Rob can get this out to you, you'll have time to look at it some more.
Did you guys get it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Can we?
Would you like some paper copies? I'm happy to.
Yeah.
Throw a bunch of paper copies on there.
Okay.
Just keep going.
Maybe that first 10 pages, Rob, is enough, you know, not the stormwater stuff. Should I keep scrolling down and keep talking?
Yeah, let's keep moving.
All right, this is, well, just consider it an overview. Don't feel you have to react then. So we had to do something, remember, we had no minimum lot size and we had no setback and people freaked out a little bit. What we did here was suggest a one-half acre lot size where community water and sewer are available. And then we took from some of your other language, the properties abutting these other kind of village centric streets as having no minimal lot size. And we can play around with the specifics of that.
Steve, we're currently at, I believe, quarter acre for water and sewer for lots signs. And going back to half, I think it's a step backwards.
Are you, you're not a quarter acre on Route 4, though, are you?
Where sewer connection is possible, yes.
Okay, then that's fine. We'll go to quarter acre. And then we felt that we should give you some kind of residential density target, you know, how many units per acre? So we've looked around at some other communities that we're both working in, and we wanted to float 12 units per acre for consideration here. And then if the developer wanted to come forward with a different design parameter that maybe would translate as higher number of units per acre, they could do that through a conditional use permit if they could satisfy the planning board.
Does that include ADUs?
That is a good question. What do you think, Mark?
I mean, typically ADUs, typically an ADU is not, there's no math. There's no, it's not considered in the density calculation for an ADU. I mean, if you have a existing single family home, no matter what size, you can have an ADU.
I believe Mark is correct on that from the state perspective.
Right.
Our ordinance permits too. Right.
Right.
But, but they don't count.
This would kick in more, Mark, right, with a multifamily, whether it be a townhouse or apartments?
Yeah, this would be from multifamily development, but you know, in ADUs, it's regulated a whole different way. And everywhere that I'm aware of, you don't need extra land, you know, to have an ADU. You know, if you have, if you have one acre zoning to have an ADU, you don't need two acres, you know, two acres. It's you're allowed to add, you know, an extra unit in your home or some, as you do, you know, you can have a detached, but it's a separate, separate matrix, separate regulation.
Where does the 12 come from?
We looked at some communities that go as high as 16. And to, it gives you more, the more density, I think it allows for a higher probability that you're going to get some workforce housing. Because of the.
Do we even need to have a limit?
Mark, what do you think will happen if they don't have a limit?
It's if you, if you don't want any limit in the downs, in the village, then that's, you know, that's fine, too. It's, it's, you know, it will certainly be a pretty big incentive, you know? You know, we, we, we were chatting and figured we'd put something in, but you know, if, if if you really want to load up the, or have the potential to load up the village, then, you know, that's fine.
Just be, I would say.
I mean, this, the way this is worded, it's 12 units and additional units is through a conditional use permit. So this could be the base. And then we could write up some parameters to say, all right, you want more than that. You know, here's some parameters that we're interested in, you know? Specific things are, that have to be available or in place, or you want oversight on. And that could be a separate, you know, compartment. So right now it almost says that and we could, we could set up the criteria to, for that oversight.
Linda has a question.
Steve, I'm having trouble with the map as to how you got to 12. Because if you're thinking quarter acres, then wouldn't it be 16? I mean, where, tell me how you got to 12.
We got to 12, Linda, by looking at other communities that have experienced the type of development that you could experience and found out what their highest number density of residential units was. And the highest Portsmouth's highest was 16. Other communities were closer to 12 and we felt that was a little bit more conservative. And then, as Mark said, having a conditional use permit as a provision, if you had the right site. So it's not simply the math of what a single family unit on a quarter acre would be versus multifamily. It's thinking about these bigger properties, if they were to be more intensely developed in the village to meet your vision.
I mean, with construction costs today, you know, you really need the density to, to make the math work.
Right.
I mean, in Bedford, right now, we're looking at trying to make a performal work for a rental project with some workforce housing set aside, and it's, it's a struggle.
Thing is, we just, there just aren't. There really aren't any big lots in the proposed village district. But aren't already. Then we already, we already have a large development going in on essentially the only big lots in the village district.
Keep in mind, this is development and redevelopment, Tim.
Right.
Say again?
This is also going to be redevelopment, where there's a lot that may have development on it now that could go away for something new.
Yeah, so like a large Victorian could go to three units if it was on a quarter acre.
Or somebody could buy two or three lots that are joining.
Sure.
Tear down what's there now and decide to put up townhouses. I just, just think a, a number limit like that is pretty arbitrary and I.
But it's, it's a way to limit what can happen and then give the, the planning board the ability to go beyond that, depending on the circumstances.
Well, I think we exercise the site plan review on anything other than. Well, we have to follow what the guide law, what the regs say when we have a site plan review.
Right. They can't even come to us.
I, I think Brad's point is well taken.
Our other thought for this was you have to get this past the town meeting, right? So not everybody is excited about density like maybe we all are in this section. So maybe having some kind of a process and limit would be less intimidating for folks as opposed to leaving it wide open. But you're welcome to if you want to, and then you just may have to revisit it if it gets to be more units than you thought.
Yeah, maybe we want to highlight the density issue and come back to that and discuss it as a board. When we're not trying to get through this entire document in the hour that Steve has with us.
That's fair. Okay. We did.
Circle back on that issue. Yep.
Yeah, I just highlighted it in here and we're flagging it. So we did put in some frontage and setback numbers. And once again, with the potential to have properties abutting those certain streets, Main Street, Blacksmith Valley, between High and Oak Grove Streets or, or any you want to identify, having no frontage requirement. We also added in a front setback requirement as far as an averaging, so average of adjacent existing structures. If they have a front yard setback, it can be the same or less than the minimum to give that flexibility, but people seemed uncomfortable with zero. And so we wanted to give you an option for that. And there's more of that on the next page, so. There it is. We also suggested, this is food for thought, maybe a, because we're thinking about both the existing village, which is more densely developed, and the Route 4 corridor, you may want to have a maximum setback. So that you don't end up with big box stores choosing to push themselves back in an area that, as Tim said, you don't have a lot of additional big lots, you don't have a lot of additional space, you want to be using it efficiently. And then we threw in the number of 15 feet first side and rear lot boundaries. We did, I think it was a suggestion by the planning board to allow for a conditional use permit. If you had a situation where maybe the neighbors were just five feet, you can allow, you know, an exception from this. Any initial thoughts or questions?
What was your reason for 100 feet frontage? We got 75 right now. And we made that change through the regulation a year or so ago. Because it was, it was forcing people to turn their houses sideways and face a different direction rather than facing the street because it didn't have a, you know, the 100 feet. We made it 75. I think, remember, we made that decision, David? Yeah, I think so. Because we want fat people to have to turn the house sideways and not face the street to get the 100 foot frontage. But I think required 100 foot frontage on the house, but 75 feet to come into the lot, I believe, was the, was, was the question. And we just eliminated that 100 foot frontage on the house and we just said 75 feet. So you got 75 foot frontage on your lot, your house can face 75 feet frontage in the lot. So you don't have to turn the house.
I'm not understanding the house piece, but we can change the frontage to 75 feet if that's what you prefer.
That's what we have now.
I guess it was in thinking about the Route 4 corridor again, if you make it too small, you could end up with really frequent driveways and congestion. And there's no provision for dealing with that on the state route. But we're happy to make it 75 if that would be preferred.
Well, we get, I'm confused about the village district includes a Route 4 business portal.
Yes.
Correct.
Yep.
So it would seem that even when we talk about permitted uses, village district, we have commercial, light industrial, that shouldn't be there. That should fall under the Route 4 commercial district.
That's not going to exist anymore, though, Tim.
Didn't we combine?
Yes.
Route 4 with.
Yes.
I had no, no impression that we've done that now. I always thought that we were going to revisit the Route 4 corridor, develop regulations for it that made more sense than what we currently have. And that would be an overlay district on the village. And then the same thing for Main Street between Hughes Park and Oak Grove Street.
So the map.
Currently works. I think it limits the commercial industrial kind of things to those two portals. I don't want to put that anywhere else, right, in the village.
I pulled, I pulled the map up because this is what we've been talking about for months and what you presented to the public. And it's this purple village district, which is a combination of the two districts you're talking about. And in the zoning update, sorry, wrong, wrong document. We've been saying at the top of all this, to replace the community business district and Route 4 district. So I'm surprised at the end of June that there's confusion.
I am, I, this is the first time I've seen that. I was not aware we were heading in that direction.
All the tables, Tim, that we had side by side, all were the same thing as well. We want to, it's going to work for you. We're running, we're running out of time. That's my, I'm getting nervous because we're running out of time to really help you get to where you want to be.
Yeah, I'm actually kind of fed up with this whole process. We have not laid out a methodical way to get to a new zoning ordinance. I'm sorry, we're just kind of bouncing around all over the place here. And I think this is the kind of thing that's going to happen again and again if we don't come up with a, a plan. Get to where we need to be. Look, there were a number of things in those placards that were, that were confusing that I didn't necessarily, I hadn't remembered agreeing to. And it led to a lot of discussion amongst the public, what are we proposing here? Had to come up and actually make some corrections on, on, on the posters. Sorry, but I think what we've got here is a grant that was supposed to help us, and I think it can massage our existing zoning ordinance to promote housing. And that's all it's doing. It's not rewriting the zoning ordinance. Which is what we've talked about, you know, for two years now. So I am frustrated. We, because of the change in contractors, consultants and the timeframe, we decided we were going to get as far as we could get, and we might not, probably would not get the full rewrite. That having been said, I think we need to maximize the use of Steve and Mark's time, and we can certainly flag this issue of Route 4 versus village and where those boundaries are, we can flag that for a board discussion when, when Steve and Mark are gone. Well, I suggest then that we do as, as little change as we, as we can that results in some increased housing opportunities, that we don't make a big, a big change to the ordinance. I just don't see that we've got time to do that.
I think that was the intent.
Well, what we're talking about here is pretty significant. Can we carry on this conversation after Steve and Mark go offline? Move on.
Do you want, I don't want a screen share if it's not helpful. It seems like there's a bigger issue that needs to be addressed, but I'm happy to screen share again, David, and just keep moving through.
I would like to keep moving through.
Okay.
And we'll deal with the other issues after you guys have gone and we'll get back to you and let you know what the outcome is.
And, and keep in mind, I guess you don't have to do anything with this. You could take as much time as you want and use whatever pieces you want after we're gone. Well, I just want to make sure we give you as much product to work with as we can. So we'll move. And then you can add, delete, whatever you want to do. So we've moved through the village district as conceived. We do need the language that Tim had provided for the new village district at the forums. I know it was vetted by the planning board prior to the forums. I just don't have the actual language. I'd like to insert that for the height piece. So if we could get that, that'd be great. I think it was you, Tim, that had put it out on the table.
We, we actually didn't come up with any language. We just settled, settled on a height.
All right, if you could, what was it?
40 feet.
It was 40 feet and then by special exception to considering the 45.
Yes, exception or, or conditional use?
Uh, I'm not sure.
Okay, so we're, we're not sure about that.
I mean, I don't remember.
We might suggest that it be a, a conditional use permit through the planning board. And you may want to go to, you may want to go to 48 if you want a three-story building for consideration, but I would suggest either 45 or whatever number that is, but it's conditionally used with the planning board.
We'll write, we'll write it up so at least you have a record of it. We'll write, we'll write it up so at least you have a record of it. So under site design requirements, we just wanted to point out, you know, our suggestion had been to use the site plan regulations for a lot of that. We could add something in about impervious surface coverage and have a maximum in here. And the maximum, whatever maximum you settle on relates to how you want to deal with stormwater management. So the reason your packet is lengthy is at the back, you're going to see two items. You're going to see a really good model ordinance from Greenland that Mark provided. As well as the state model ordinance, which has kind of a broader interpretation and has some background information. There's some overlap between the two. In either case, they could be applied townwide. And what's nice about Greenland is it has a provision for new development and a provision for redevelopment. So you're not being too onerous in places where there are smaller modifications happening and you want to encourage people to do things within those developed sites. But having heard what we heard at the Lake Shore Conversation, this seemed like something we should get for you, even though it's not housing specific. Any density is going to generate issues with stormwater and be a concern. Any questions? Okay. So the next two, we did the, in the R3 District, we made a couple of suggestions and we can just go through this so, to make sure that it's clear. Our suggestion was the one-family, two-family or duplex that's allowed there now to maybe not try to force multifamily dwellings in that district. You can allow multifamily dwellings. Sorry, I'm clicking too fast. You can allow them, but our thought was to, because of the size of the district and because of some of what we've been hearing in this process, to actually allow triplex units. If they have a minimum of four point five acres instead of the three acres. And so that's both to allow for some additional space for the triplex, but also not to ask for so much land that you don't get affordable, somewhat affordable units. Mark, anything else you want to add about that between the single-family duplex and triplex and the R3?
Yeah, and I, I think that was the thought process as far as the, the, the area. And also that it's not allowed by right, it's going to have to be looked at on a case-by-case basis. It's a conditional use permit through the planning board review. And that you can take context as far as where it is being proposed, as far as, you know, is it appropriate or not? And is it, is looking at the neighborhood and what's there for wetlands and sensitivity and things like that.
All right. Any, any comments or questions, David, in the room? Or should I go to R5?
Um, I don't see anybody with hands ready, so let's go to R5.
All right.
So just, just to give it some context though. So the, 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 it would be for the duplex. It would be allowed by right, but the setback would increase. And the same with the triplex. Right now it's thirty feet. A duplex would have to be sixty feet. And then for the triplex, it would have to be ninety feet. So yeah, it's a higher density, but you're not sitting on the street. You're, you're further back to respect that. And we also added, I think it's important, you should all, we should also note that there's a backlot provision now, Steve?
Yes.
For the down, because that's new.
Yeah. Right here, backland lots.
So that's new to the, as a, as an alternative development idea. It would have to be three acres. You could have twenty feet of frontage. The home would have to be back two hundred feet. And you can have up to four lots being accessed from a common drive. That's, you know, obviously something that's allowed in a community I work in in Hollis, but it's, I put it in there and, you know, you guys can chew on it and, and see if that's something you want to be able to do. The idea is you could have a common drive serving four homes that are in the, that are considered backlots.
And you could make it, you could make it fewer than four if that was.
Absolutely.
Right.
Yeah.
All right. So you'll see some similarities with R5 and some differences. So R5, single-family dwellings, of course, accessory dwellings, and then this idea of a second residential unit, which we had floated at the forums, and then of course, a, a two-family duplex. And also in the R5, under conditional use permit, we have the triplex unit. It didn't seem like going beyond triplex was going to be popular in the R5, but you would all be the better, better gauge of that. And like Mark talked about, we included duplex but units by right. With the front setback being larger and triplex units, if given a conditional use permit with also the front setback being larger. And then we have backlots here as well, right, Mark?
Yep.
We have the backland lots, but we also have some language on the second residential unit. So providing these opportunities for multi-generational living, adding a second single-family home, so it could be larger than the, the accessory dwelling unit limits. On a compliant lot in the district. And a larger setback, so you don't end up with it close to the road. All right, now you're all too quiet. I feel like you've left the room because I can't see you. All right. So what did the conditional use permits look like? Mark wrote up one for the triplex, just to give you all an example of what they look like. We didn't want to inundate you with conditional use permits and then hear that you don't like the concept, but we, we feel we still owe you conditional use permits for, for the use exceptions, if you want to use them in the village. And for a couple of other items. So we still want to write those up. They'll look like this for the most part. They may have some different aspects because of what they're addressing, but they're kind of a one-pager. They talk about what's expected. They talk about who administers the conditional use permit. And then in this case, triplex is specific to R3 and R5. And so it talks about what the applicant has to satisfy. And it gives the planning board a chance to talk through this and make sure that it's an appropriate use in that district. Anything?
Yeah, this is very similar to a special exception provision that's, that's different than a variance. And you're setting up specific standards. Again, this would be overseen by the planning board. And in this case, there's, you know, six different standards that the applicant would have to demonstrate to the satisfaction of the planning board that they're meeting each one of these before you would grant approval. So this is, you know, as part of their submission to you. They would address these issues in writing or reports as necessary. And if you felt that it met these standards, then you could approve the CUP for that use for that site.
And then the next thing we have is accessory dwelling units with some new options. So accessory dwelling units with a twist. For the R3 and the R5 zoning districts, we suggested removing the not more than eight hundred square feet. And instead providing these three choices below, and this gives you something to consider as a board kind of moving forward. Not more than two accessory dwelling units on a single lot. But some flexibility to have one unit up to twelve hundred square feet and an additional unit up to eight hundred square feet. So some kind of limiting on overall size of these units. They may be internal within the structure, existing structure. They may be added on to the existing structure or they may be attached. But there's only a maximum of one detached, uh, single ABU. Mark, any other thing you want to add to this?
No, that pretty much captures it.
That's pretty similar to what we have now with the exception of the twelve hundred, right?
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that strikeout of the eight hundred and then the adding of that is the biggest change.
But also removing, you know, removing the three-family, you know, provision.
Right.
Gets it, makes it more complicated, for phrasing.
Question, question for Mark and Steve. Does, does the state building code allow us to do that with the removal of the uh, three dwelling units provision on, on the multi-family building code?
Well, the code is the code, so if the code requires, you know, for example, sprinkling, the owner's going to have to do that. So zoning can't overrule code. So whatever the code says, it'll have to meet.
But we're trying not to trigger any additional zoning requirements or regulatory requirements from the land use perspective, right?
Right.
So the biggest change here is really the multi-generational, two, two buildings on the same lot. But that's only for R5?
Yes. We thought R3 might be a hard one. It's not a huge district. I mean, you all could decide if it's worth trying there, but it seemed that adding a second full single-family lot on a three-acre lot may be hard.
Steve, could you scroll up a little bit? On my copy, it says R3 and R5.
This is for accessory dwelling unit?
Yeah, I'm talking about the multi-generational.
Yeah, Brad's talking about the multi-generational in R5.
Remember we always argued about having two separate dwellings on the same lot?
Yeah.
And Rob had gotten a lot of feedback that there were a lot of families that really wanted to build an additional uh, unit on their property for grandparents or whatever. And so we had talked about that, but I think that's just R5.
Correct. It's this language here for R5.
So this would have no restriction on size? It could be any, you know, any size?
Oh, there you are. Okay.
Yep.
So there's no restriction on, on size limit. It could be bigger than the home that, than the, than the principal home that's already there.
But because of that, we thought maybe in the R3, it might feel like a bit much.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. It's sure something for us to discuss though.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, if you think it's something that would, would be acceptable, that's fine. We just thought it was safer just to keep it in the five.
I mean, you could also make it a minimum, it could be a minimum lot size component. Maybe you want to get above that five acres. But we were trying to keep it as flexible and, and just focus on that district for now, knowing that.
You could, I'm sorry.
There may not be a lot of people that take you up on this. But there's been some interest from what Rob said.
I mean, there could be a provision in the R3 that if they have an extra-sized lot, that you would allow it.
Yep.
You know, if they have a five-acre lot, they have a, you know, a larger property in the R3, then they could. But if they only have three acres, they can't. That might be an option too.
We can add a note about that, just so you don't lose it. You can revisit it. All right. And then the last piece, which I won't go through page by page because it'd be too painful for all of you, would be the stormwater control standards. So we just stop sharing.
What town did this come from, Steve?
Uh, the first one's from Greenland, New Hampshire, where Mark is working. It's recently adopted. I thought it was really, really good. And the other one is the state model that a lot of towns have kind of built off of, so you can do a little compare and contrast. But as.
We're definitely going to have to look at that as a result of some of the information we got from the, the lake meeting.
I think so. And as Mark said, it's kind of coming to every community one, one way or the other. So if you can elect to do it on your own, I think people may be more in favor, and you may get some better quality development in this new kind of area of focus. And I mean, stormwater is going to become a bigger and bigger issue for all of our communities. And if you can have this in place before you see some of this development, you'll probably have an easier time.
I mean, it's going to be. Go ahead, Mark. Well, it's, it's, you know, in, in Greenland, you know, the EPA is, and everybody actually is, you know, obviously is very concerned about Great Bay. All of Greenland drains into Great Bay. It's a very sensitive ecosystem. So this was actually adopted five years ago and just got re-adopted because the EPA came out with new standards. And they worked with the Rockingham Planning Commission to develop these new standards. So it provides some flexibility. Given the sensitivity of, of what you're seeing in, in your watershed and the lake there, and it's already being strained. This is coming, so. It's something to chew on.
Would this be part of the site plan regs or where would this fit in the?
Yes, we, we have it in the site plan regs and subdivision rig, any development. It would, it would cover both. It covers both in, in Greenland. It should cover both, you know, if you're going to apply it. I mean, it both, in both cases, you know, building a subdivision road or building a parking lot, you want drainage to be addressed. And the water quality.
And it doesn't stop you from doing other things, like I heard your town manager referring to uh, stormwater utility as a concept that's being discussed, like any of the best management practices, things that you can incentivize people to do for the existing development, you can still do that. But having this in place for any changes and any new development would be beneficial. So the only other things we had, just didn't want to ignore the Lake Shore District discussions. We, we heard a lot at that session. It was a really good session. It sounds like it was beneficial for all of you. I don't know if you've had a chance to talk about it yet as a board. But it doesn't seem as, back to Tim's comment earlier about just kind of the focus of this work. It doesn't seem to have as strong of a housing focus, so we didn't do anything with the Lake Shore District as of yet. And I don't know that you'll want us to. The other thing I was going to mention is just, we'd like to deliver some fact sheets to you, some kind of single-page or double-sided page descriptions of some of these concepts, like the second residential unit, you know? What does it mean? Why would people allow it? Just to give you some to think about using if you decide to roll out any of these changes. We could do one for the conditional use permits. How do they work? Why are they being used? We could do one for the, the Village District. And duplexes and triplexes, so, and backlot development. We, we thought that getting some of those to you with kind of an end field focus and just very user-friendly, easy to read might be beneficial.
That would be appreciated.
Okay, so we'll have those ahead of the next meeting. So that you can take a look at them and then we can make changes. We're learning quickly that these projects, the final invoices for all the HOP grant stuff is like right around the twenty-ninth of July. I don't know what you've heard, Rob?
I heard the end of July. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're looking at not meeting with you again until the twenty-fourth. That's pretty close to the twenty-ninth. So I, all I can tell you is that what Mark and I said was that we will invoice by the twenty-ninth, but it's possible that we will be still doing some things on your behalf after we've invoiced. And we're okay with that, as long as it doesn't go on forever. But I think into August, it's clear if we want to make some edits and get them to you, and if you look at it as a board and you have, have Rob reach out to us if you need something, we'll be here to help you. Just make sure you, you're where you need to be. And then either get more HOP money or just continue to work on it as a planning board because you're all very hands-on.
Yeah, that'd be good. Anything else for us?
No, that's it. I mean, we'll take the feedback we got tonight. You'll have all this with you for the next few weeks. So I would say if you can continue to talk as a board about what you want beyond what we've already shared and beyond the fact sheets and CUP handouts that we promised, just let us know.
And if, you know, if the board does come up with some thoughts or coalesces around comments and ideas before the twenty-fourth that could get to us, that would be great. So we can prepare to address that at that meeting. So.
Okay.
That'd be appreciated.
Any questions or comments for resilience?
No.
Okay. Seeley, did you have a question or comment regarding this for?
I just, I just wanted to ask, am I wrong to say that there is a law, a state law allowing an estate to have a next to house? As a or, you know, with the, I think there is. Like if on a five-acre lot, you've got a house and you want to build a house for somebody that's going to work for you or your mother-in-law, said that already exists. And I'm not sure. Do you know that? I'm going to ask you folks. Are you aware of that law?
I'm not aware of it. I'm not aware of an estate specific law. Um, I'm aware of towns that have had things like an accessory dwelling unit. Before we called it that, which would have allowed for some kind of caretaker's accommodations or mother-in-law accommodations, like you're saying. Mark, do you know of anything else?
Um, I'm not aware of any state law. I know, um, the farming community. You know, in, in Hollis, where I do work, there's, there is boarding hu- houses at some of the bigger farms in town. Um, to allow for the seasonal workers to come in and, but they've been there for thirty, forty, fifty years. Um, but I'm not aware of, aside from the accessory dwelling unit statute that was adopted a few years ago. Um, I'm not aware of a state code. Um, zoning is, we're very individual in the state and, and I'm not aware. Of, of a state code that, that allows for that. I've never seen it anyway.
I hope not. There was.
I wonder the breaker boxes in the basement of the main house.
All right. Mark and Steve, thank you very much for joining us and for.
Thanks for having us.
All of the ideas and suggestions and model ordinances and clearly. As a board, we still have some things left to discuss and we will. We will do that and we will get back to you.
Great.
Sounds great. Thank you all. We do appreciate it.
Have a good fourth. Thanks.
You too.
Thanks.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, um. Coming back on the agenda, there are no hearings, no conceptual, um, Eric, select board report. I'm sure. Alright, so we had a good meeting last week. Uh, we have a new police officer, Kayla Bosvet. So she's already a certified officer, which is great with the town, because we don't have to send her to the academy. She's also, um, already volunteering on our fire department and, um, ambulance service. So.
The police force is fully stacked.
Yes, the police force, police staff, the police, I forget what exactly they call it, but the, the helper who also does the crossing guard stuff. They have a person lined up, but they're waiting until the end of the summer to hire that person formally. Uh, because the need was really, well, the primary need is the crossing guard.
So does that allow them to go, um, pre-shift seven days a week?
It'll, it'll, I believe we're actually five twenty-four is what they officially.
Yeah.
Uh, do, but yes, they're fully staffed. They can cover, um, the twenty, I think it's twenty four five is what they officially.
Yeah.
Do. But yeah, they're fully staffed with officers. And, uh, officer we hired over the winter is at the academy, I believe, right now. So, so it'll be certified soon. Um, let's see, we also, same with that, uh. We received, well, we received a grant for forty thousand dollars for outfitting the E O C, the Emergency Operating Operations Center. In the new public safety building. Um, also on staff, we have a new building inspector who. I don't know if he started yet, but he's moving up here from, well, he's, he's transitioning up from working in Claremont right now. So he's also. Already got the professional certifications, which is also good for us.
Had said he started Monday.
He started Monday. Okay, yeah. Um, public safety building, handy groundbreaking, lakeside park is paving and lots of landscaping and tree planting. It looks really nice. Uh, let's see. And then the biggest thing we did was a public hearing around a potential energy audit program. That the, um, energy committee is outlining and, and starting an education process around. Um, but that's very much at the beginning, uh, stages of discussion. Okay. Oh, and one other thing that actually would be of interest to this group, um. We, let's see, the, uh, Johnson Drive property, the person who had the right to first purchase. Fluff flopped again, chose not to purchase it. Um.
Why? Do we know?
My understanding, which could be flawed, but my understanding is that they sold the other property and the new buyer didn't want it. So that, that's, that could be correct. That could, there could be a mistake there.
Sure, yeah.
That's what I've heard.
Yeah.
But that's not in any way an official statement.
Does that lot six you're talking?
Yes, yeah, 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 lots of ten, no, we're.
It's the little triangle, the little one.
The little triangle. Um, we did have an RFP out for other, uh, proposals from anyone and we received zero. We did not receive any. Um, so at the last select board meeting. Um, the select board voted to keep the property as is basically, um, in a three to two vote, two of us. Thought we should reopen it and see if there were more, you know, if there was any renewed interest, give it one last shot and. But in a three to two vote, they, we voted to keep the property out of this.
Mm-hmm. So what's, what's the thinking? Maybe, maybe you can't even share this, but what's the thinking of the, uh, lot? Uh, three, which is, uh, not ours yet. Um, do you think that the, at this point, the select board is. Inclined to just keep that as well?
I don't know. I think.
It seems.
Yeah, I, I don't know. Um, I think certainly I'm inclined to push to have the committee's recommendation seen through.
My point exactly.
Uh, you know, that, that's what I'm inclined to do, but I, we have not discussed that one because it's not really.
Not there yet.
You're right.
It's gonna happen soon.
Yes, it's, yeah. And, and it also, like, it may be a different select board that has to make that decision and, um, depending on when.
As you know, my only viewpoint on that is it's a ton of six months worth of work.
Yeah.
On that recommendation and already it's falling apart. And that's how I feel.
And I think it's a very fair.
And, and that's how everybody on the board feels. And, and I'm, I, I can tell you, I'm not being at the meeting. I know Alice probably feels the same way.
Yeah.
So it's, it's very, my humble opinion, very unfortunate.
And, and I. I sympathize and I, like I said, I'm inclined, when that another property becomes.
And similarly, the, the Methodist Hill, for different reasons.
Yeah.
Fell apart too. Different reason, right? But it's like, those people are like. Really?
Yeah.
I mean, no one's fault, right? But it was six months worth of work and it all went to hell.
Well, it's a tremendous, it is a tremendous amount of work. I would say that the discussions that a lot of those, uh, that those two committees brought forth to the town did have. Some values, certainly within the master planning process, it did increase engagement. But you're correct. Neither, neither of the. So far, neither of the recommendations from those, well, actually like four of the recommendations from the Johnson Drive Committee are happening. I forget how many there are exactly. The keeping the two parcels is happening in the state that they're in, not transitioning.
That, that, as you well know, that was hard fought.
It was.
Because that was hard fart to come up with that, that compromise and.
Yep.
I'll get off my sofa.
Okay, and I will continue to sympathize with your sofa.
Question for you, um, an update on the Shed Street.
Uh, we, the RFP for that closed. We received one. We have a non-public discussion coming up Monday regarding that proposal. And that's where that's.
Only one.
Only one. And so that's, that's part of what our discussion's gonna be is how to, um, how to deal with that.
I'm surprised.
Yeah, no, we, we were all surprised. So we, we did ask, gave to sort of ask, did people not respond? Why did people not respond? And sort of learn, learn about that.
Post warning.
Interesting.
I can give you a little update on that.
Yeah, but I guess what I would say is that one's not, no decisions have been made regarding what to do with that property. So it's not.
But you think that.
I, I, I don't know. We'll, we'll see. Anyway, if you have an update on that, I think.
Yeah, so I mean, it's a, it's a legit response. I know, I know it is. It's actually kind of surprised me as how much they were offering and so forth, but. Now, since that happened, we've actually been getting communications from other developers that are gone. Wait a second, really? Oh, I, I, I'm interested in that. So it's like, we may want to put it back out, you know, it's totally up to you guys.
Yeah.
And it's not a bad thing to say, well, we didn't get enough response. We're gonna put it out again.
Yeah.
Can I tweet the RFP language and say, this is what we're asking for this time? Give them another shot, everybody. Obviously, the person that responded the first time will be free to respond again or. Keep this existing offer on the table. But I do have a really reputable developer that I've talked to today about that. It's very interested in himself. I've communicated with Ed, so he's, he's still communicate that with you guys, so.
Rob, is that with the standard zoning in place? No?
Yes.
We're gonna have to do a site plan review on Shed Street, whatever's built there, correct?
Absolutely.
And it's well, unli- unless they.
Unless somebody wants to put one.
Right, but. And we're, we're hoping.
More than likely, yes.
More than a single family.
Anything else from the select board?
Um, only, I, well, I guess the last thing is it was already sort of, you know, they mentioned it before that Ed just started, um. Bringing up stormwater and Lake Shore septic regulations. Uh, we've lifted what Sonopie has for septic regulations. And basically instructed Ed to go and start drafting some Florida and feel the sea walk, you know. To get that going. Um, and that would be under a health order, not a zoning order, or ordinance. Or other type of ordinance. I, I expect the lake people who came here and those that wouldn't would be.
Delighted.
Very happy to learn that, um, their wishes are moving forward.
Even though it's gonna cost the lake people money, there's still, everybody's for it.
And then, um, in conjunction with that, started just investigating what could be done on the stormwater side. Which has a much wider impact throughout now. Um, there's some zoning things that should be talked about with this group very directly. You know, there's a format within New Hampshire to have a stormwater utility, which I can't say I really understand yet. Um, and that, but that would definitely be a back burner. It would take a couple of years to ever get something like that.
Yeah.
Um, but we basically told that, like, keep it in mind, have people knowledgeable about, let's build our knowledge of it as we move forward.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but no short term action on the, on that side.
My understanding with the stormwater utility is, is, is especially where there's density. Then there's no real good spot for people to dump their stormwater. You know, you got your perimeter drains going around your house. If you have a quarter acre lot, there's really no place to go. And so that some towns are actually, you know, using. Some kind of a catch system, a catchment system. So there's underground pipes, obviously separate from. Sewer and the water pipes under the street, there's a, there's a stormwater. Lebanon has put a huge amount of investment in, they call it the C S O. It's a contained stormwater overflow. The old days, the stormwater actually went right into the sewer. Which is fine ninety-nine percent of the time, but when we had those terrible rain events, you had overwhelming rain. It would go into the sewer and actually cause the sewer to overflow into the river. And so by separating. Sewer and stormwater into their own systems, you, you avoid that sort of overwhelming sewer treatment. And sewer catchment such that, I mean, obviously the stormwater is not contaminated conceivably. I mean, there's probably some places in a parking lot where it's this, it would be, but. I think one of the things that we need to do as a town, especially in the rural areas, there are things, best practices. That the individual homeowner can do, but nobody knows what those are.
Right.
Right? And, and there's lots of things that can be done to help.
Exactly.
And, and because a lot of people really want to do those things, but they're, you know, they're not.
That's what it is. Exactly.
The old days of taking your stormwater and daylighting it onto your neighbor's property.
Right.
Gotta go.
That's what we gotta get, that, that's.
Exactly, exactly. So nowadays, you'll see it. I mean, if you guys watch Jake's car wash going in. They're handling all of their own stormwater on that site, on their own site, such that there's like an underground septic system underneath the parking lot of that place. That is designed to take stormwater and put it into the ground, such that the ground can filter that water and handle it. And again, you're not, you're not just taking your water and dumping it off onto somebody else. We actually have an example of this happening right now. Two lots up on, uh, Potato, right next to each other. Uh, the first one in sort of built at the, at the existing elevation. The second one in said, no, no, I want to build my site up. So they bring in Phil and they put their house here. All of a sudden, all their stormwater is going down onto the neighbor's property. So that's an example of. We kind of have to have some regulations, I think, in place to kind of, and, and it came up at that meeting that we had lake people. As we were walking up Lock Haven Road above Holly Drive, every single house above you is dumping their stormwater right into the ditch.
Right into the ditch.
And that's all coming down. You know, you got eight, ten inch pipes, just, here you go. It's not my water anymore. It's your water.
Yeah, right, right.
So that's, I mean, that's a problem. And I see, you know, catch, catchment systems, rain guards, infiltration ponds. It's basically like a little septic system for your stormwater.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a big.
And that's what some of the things that we want to do is holding ponds, but. You have to, it's in current land use, the land that we could do the holding pond on, and then you're gonna get D E S involved. And it's like, D E S. If nobody can watch you put D E S because of two years, right?
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah.
Just a point of information that, um. Car wash is definitely better in terms of their water than they used to be last year, but it's still, I mean, right. They still, they still drain down into the ground.
You're talking about rain, because I was talking about Jake's.
Okay, thanks for that comment, David. Um, okay, uh, we're done with select board report. Legislative report, uh, we wrapped up our session, session at the end of May. Uh, in a pain season now. I can highlight, I think, a few bills that I've highlighted throughout. Since January and kind of tell you where I think they are. Um. First of all, the bill that would have regulated wake boats. Died in the Senate. So the current, um. Minimum distance to the shore is a hundred feet, which is, which is less than. What either the Senate bill or the House bill had proposed.
Well, any sense of why it died? I mean, that, that's a real erosion issue.
Stupid, I agree.
Very serious issue. So what happened?
What, what happened was.
Do, do we want to really spend a lot of time talking about this?
I think we do because it's, because lake erosion and lake, lake quality is an issue. That is important to a lot of people in this town.
Well, I, I realize that, but.
We will spend a short amount of time on it and then we will continue. Um. The reason that I believe it died is because the House and the Senate could not reach a compromise agreement. Uh, another bill that died somewhere along the, in the process. Was the omnibus bill, omnibus bill, which would have given select boards the power to. Um. Fight zoning regs whenever and however they wanted. Um, and it would have done, uh. Eliminated parking requirements or changed parking requirements with some very nebulous language. So that bill died. And the bill that would have allowed the S B two question to go on the. Um, official written ballot next year, uh, I believe the Senate, it died, that bill died in the Senate. I don't know why. And.
No productive session.
No. But not for, well, you know. A lot of bills were passed, uh, some of the ones that I thought should have passed. Weren't. And a lot of bills that I thought shouldn't have passed were passed. And that's just the way it is. So that's it for legislative report. And until we go back into session, I will probably not be giving any reports. Um, Rob?
Go ahead. Uh, just a follow up on something that Eric mentioned. The, the new building inspector started on Monday. His name is Vincent. We call him Vinny. That's what he goes by. Last name is Chersey. He's, uh, moved into the office here where Liam was, um, and is hitting the ground rolling. It's obviously a. Pretty heavy lift to get up to speed on everything here in town. We call it drinking from the fire, fire hose, but, uh. He seems like he's got a good head on his shoulders, good attitude. Um, Ed and I had some good productive meetings with him on sort of philosophy and. Kind of bringing him up to what we're hoping to get out of him and so forth. So, uh, he has already done some inspections. Big projects going on here in town. We've got, uh, public safety with Whitney Hall, we've got basketball lakeside park. And then all the other building going on in town. So he's got plenty of work and, uh, he'll be busy this summer. It's kind of a tough time to start as a building inspector in the middle of busy building season, but because like Eric said, he does come to us from Claremont. because like Eric said, he does come to us from Claremont with all the certifications. He was there for a year. He's also uh been a home inspector, which is a little different than a building inspector. More like when you sell your property, somebody wants to get a good look at, you know, make sure that the chimney is clean and the uh, you know, plantings aren't growing up against the foundation, that kind of stuff. But it has, it definitely has some crossover capabilities. He, he's done that for quite a while. Uh, we, we joked with him, my year in Claremont, I was probably five years in, in Enfield, I mean, he was 10 years because he was very busy down there. They were very busy with a lot of development and a lot of controversial projects, a lot of enforcement, a lot of tough uh neighborhoods to work in. So he's, he's got some great experience and, and perspective and he lives in the town of Newport and uh he actually, uh, Ed sent him, just to follow up on what you said. He went today to the Sonopie Town Office. They were having a, a meeting to follow up on the sort of first uh, uh, results of their soup, uh, septic system ordinance, the health and ordinance they put into place that we're hoping to kind of maybe lift a little bit, maybe use some of their elements. Uh, so that was good. Uh, I'm bringing them up to speed on everything I can. He and I are, you know, obviously one department. Uh, so he's technically working for me, but we work together. Uh, so that's exciting. Uh, we'll miss Liam. Liam's gone off to Lebanon. He's still coming in one day a week because he has it a little bit of time. So he's helping us with the transition. He'll be here on Friday this week to help Vinny with some of the issues that we're actively working on. Uh, uh, David and I attended the uh Regional Planning Commission's annual meeting down in Claremont, the Ever Valley Lake Sonopie Regional Planning. It was an excellent meeting. David and I got to sit with the Lebanon Director of Planning and Zoning. Uh, a guy named Nathan Reichert. We had a great discussion with him. And that was productive in and of itself right there. I thought that, that right there was kind of 50% of the reason I go to those meetings, that you make good contacts. Uh, and we sort of resolved to get together and kind of share information. We talked about the watershed analysis that Lebanon and Enfield's going to help participate in. Uh, so that was productive. Uh, I also had the opportunity to attend the Spring Conference of the New Hampshire Planners Association. That was in Keene. That was excellent, excellent, excellent. If anybody here has not been to Keene lately, Keene is a really cool town and they've got a lot of neat things going down there. Uh, their main street is probably the envy of the whole state, if not the whole region. It is a thriving downtown. Uh, every shop and store is full. They have, uh, it says 77 restaurants within walking distance of the main street. Uh, we, we ended up at a really nice little brewery after the meeting. Uh, they took us on a tour of projects, interesting history of Keene, not completely dissimilar to Enfield. It was a railroad town. Uh, now they've redeveloped railroad assets similar to what we're doing here. Um, again, great networking with planners all over the state. Um, learned a lot about all kinds of different stuff. I can elaborate on that and get too much on that, but if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to. Uh, uh, we're busy in the office here. There's a lot of stuff going on. Uh, last week, the zoning board met to uh hear appeals for the Laramie Farm uh variances that were granted back in May. We had two uh requests for rehearings. Uh, they heard those on Tuesday night last week, the 18th, uh, and denied the requests for rehearing. So now we're in a new period of appeal for the people that had asked for the request for rehearings. The way that it works is basically they have to come to the zoning board within 30 days of the granting of the approval. Or basically it's essentially asking for reconsideration. And that's designed by state law to sort of give the zoning boards an opportunity to kind of let the dust settle a little bit, let them think about it. Say, did we get it right? Did we get it wrong? That kind of stuff. And then they made their decision not to grant any rehearing. So now another appeals window has opened for those two couples to ask for a appeal at the superior court level. And so we're 30 days from the 18th of June, so roughly the 18th of July would be the cutoff of those. Uh, and then those applicants, uh, the Laramie Farms people would probably likely be in with the zoning board again for, uh, they need a special exception for crossing wetlands if they're going to proceed to. That's in our zoning ordinance. Uh, there's a little pond, it's actually on this property that has a little drainage system that comes down from that pond and sort of crosses the site and comes down to before headed for Massoma Lake eventually and Massoma River. Uh, and so they'll, that'll be the next thing. If that is granted, then from there, I think they're all set with the zoning. Then they would come to you guys for major site plan review, which I would say the earliest we see them in this room for you guys would be the fall, coming up maybe September, October, at the earliest. They still have work to do. They're sort of kind of holding off on the next steps before the first steps are completed. They've sort of got to walk it in the right order. Uh, so we'll see what happens there. Um, I've been working on that piece of property that Bob McCroy owns behind me, old dealership there, still getting a lot of interest there. I think again, as we, as we move forward in this housing crisis, I, I said this to you guys before, the, you know, the bullseye was firmly on Lebanon, Hanover, White River. But as they sort of run out of space and they sort of max out their capacity, and I think that Lebanon last year, about 1,500 units of housing, the, the bullseye is getting bigger. So I think Enfield is certainly being looked at as a possible place for housing, obviously, as evidenced by Laramie Farms, but other, other sites as well. Uh, we're busy in the building permits. I did, at Tim's request, I went to that spreadsheet that we've got. We're on uh permit number 78 issued this week. Uh, I did classify the permits in a column here on the uh right side. The six options for the classification were a building permit, an electrical permit, plumbing permit, mechanical, demolition, or assembly. So those are now classified. I'll pass them around. You guys want to take a look through. Obviously, this is all public information. You're free to come in anytime and see us. Uh, if you want to look at packets, if you want to look at applications, they're all here. So you're welcome to. At some day down the road, it's going to be selectman's ball. We may actually have some software that helps us manage this. This is just a Excel spreadsheet. So I'll pass that around. You're welcome to. One thing I would, I would say to uh, to you guys, I said, notice the, the amount of solar. There's a lot of solar in there. That's obviously a hot issue these days. I know that we had a solar company talking to the energy committee last night uh, about some ideas. Solar is, as I said, kind of still rapidly expanding. A lot of people are putting in solar. As, as Phil would tell you, the, the tax incentives have changed to make it more enticing for municipalities to be able to take some uh discounts. And uh, I know that on, you know, on the federal level, they maintain some of those tax incentives for private people. So we continue to see, there's a lot of trackers that are going in. Those are the ones that kind of tip. That's what you have. Those are supposedly more efficient because they can kind of follow the sun and not just be stationary, right? And they also have a system to tip up and dump the snow, right?
Yes.
Which is a big deal.
They go to bed at night.
Right, for the wind and stuff. They, they kind of set on a plane. So, uh, like I said, just fairly busy. You know, a lot of stuff happening here. Public Works is busy. Uh, obviously the uh big projects, uh, two big projects are taking up a lot of our uh, energies because there's always the sort of downstream uh, things that happen like Massoma Lake Side Park. We're helping them. They've been bringing material up here. We've been setting stones down for the landscaping. Uh, their roadside mowing is going. It's, it's busy. So any questions, throw them at me.
Rob, you want to say a final word on that uh teleconference we had the other day with the people from the state?
Oh, yeah. So uh, David had met a, a, a gentleman at the, uh, it was a tour in Dover, no, Exeter.
Exeter.
And uh, got us in touch with some folks at the D E S to talk about some grant money that's available through the state for uh water source protection, which is like wellhead protection area. Interestingly, David and I talked to them a lot about this. Technically, Massoma Lake is a water source for the city of Lebanon. So we were discussing uh whether we could qualify for some grant money to do some analysis and source water protection of Massoma Lake that would obviously benefit Lebanon downstream, but it would obviously benefit us too because as we've talked about at, I'll just give you here, water quality is sort of our bread and butter in this town. It's something we've now the future, that's what we're going to be working on. I think the next 25 years here is going to be continuing to do everything we can. And I did actually have, this will be a selectman's thing. You'll hear from some point soon, Eric. Uh, the Lake Association, Massoma Lake Association and some uh residents there have gotten together and come up with some signage specifically addressed dog poop.
It's on the rail trail already.
It is an epidemic in this town. I think it's an epidemic everywhere because everybody's got, and pets are a multi-billion dollar industry in this country. Everybody's got pets. People are more likely to have pets than they are to have kids. So uh, I call it an unforced error to let the dog poop pile up on the side of the road or on the side of the rail trail. I had a guy call me, he said, is that, is that a problem? You know, if it's on the side of Shaker Boulevard? And I said, absolutely, it's a problem. Because where do you think that dog poop's going to end up? It's going in the lake. And again, we have enough problems on our own with Mother Nature, bringing giant rainstorms and crazy weather. We don't need to add bacteria, you know, uh, E. coli to the lake with dog poop. And the other problem that we saw last year and it, I think it continues is even the people that are bagging the dog poop.
Leave the bag.
They don't leave the bag. Or they throw the bag in the bushes, which is to me just terrible set. And uh, the guy that owns the laundromat, Brian Dick, people will take bagged dog poop and they throw it on the roof of his building. And then last summer, we had people throwing bagged dog poop in the porta potty such that the guy who comes to pump gets it in his pump and it can kill a $10,000 pump by binding it up. So we've got work to do in this town on all fronts with, with respect to water quality. And it's sometimes stuff you don't even really think about, but I, I tell you, like I said, we have enough troubles.
Are there ordinances or fines that can be applied?
I would say so. I mean, we obviously have.
Beach stall issue, right?
Yeah, yeah.
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 There are some towns that are using DNA testing.
Yes, yes. And camera surveillance.
Yeah.
Happening in, in urban areas to catch people.
You get your dog license, they get DNA tests on your dog.
We've been having a terrible time. Yeah. We've been having a terrible time. Veterans Park, which is right on four, uh, sort of at the top of High Street. Dog, people bringing their dogs in there to pee and poop in our, in our veterans park, which is, which is terrible.
Can't the town put up a receptacle on the long?
That, that may be the future, but of course, then you get empty. Then you, then somebody's, I mean, it's more staff time, more, more labor, more money. I mean, obviously we've got a, it's a political thing. Yeah.
That's not, I, I'm real true fan of the park. So it's, it's not, and there's, there's receptacles in the park.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And, and when we originally did the park, we said, no, it's going to be a packet in, packet out park. But we, we, we hadn't caved on that because it was so much of a problem that we put trash bins at the park. But I mean, it's just.
Okay, we're, we're straying a little bit off topic.
I got one more question for you, Rob.
Yeah.
I saw a bunch of trucks. Are they expanding the fiber optic network down Main Street?
Uh.
There was a whole bunch of cable income.
I think that, I saw that this morning too. I think that is directly correlated to the cell tower. I believe that they're bringing fiber up to the new cell tower up on top of Driver's Hill.
Okay.
And I believe that connection.
They have to tie into the fiber here.
Yeah.
On Main Street and run it all through that tower.
Well, I think that, I think the fiber was on Route Four, but they're, they're, they're finding something's wrong with that cable that it needs some kind of repair.
They're all over Main Street.
Yeah, they were all over Route Four this morning too. Yeah. Uh.
Okay.
We did get a grant. Ed, Rob can tell you more about that, that I think eventually Enfield will be 100% fiber. That's a Grafton County thing that we're excited about.
Good.
So.
Yeah.
Way ahead of me.
Okay, okay. So moving.
The uh, Excel spreadsheet that you have here, could, could we, could we get a just sort of matter-of-factly, maybe once a month, the board just gets a copy of that?
Yeah. I've been sending it out.
I think the digital version, just email it to us.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, all right, we have minutes from two different meetings, first one being May 22nd.
Anybody need copies?
Anybody have any corrections or comments on the May 22nd meeting?
I have no changes.
I have one addition I'd like to have you consider. Line 201. Uh, the exception for Larry, Larry developers, the height to exceed the current 35 feet limit. And I, it was exceed, it was, excuse me, change 275 feet. Would you put in 275 feet there?
Question is, what did Rob say actually?
He isn't what? Oh, what did he say?
That's what minutes are. They are a.
What he said.
They are a.
Well, I don't know what he.
A recap of what was actually said, not necessarily what should have been said. So, um, why, why don't we ask, ask Whitney to review and make that addition if necessary? Any other questions or comments, corrections?
I didn't find any other issues.
Somebody make a motion.
Motion that we approve the minutes as is with the possible exception of Whitney.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Same.
Minutes are accepted with the possible change that Whitney will review the um recording and make a change if necessary. Next, minutes of June 6th.
Fourth.
I'm sorry, June 4th. Thank you, Linda. Um, questions, comments?
Line 139. Mr. Gibson urged the planning board to consider a 500-foot shoreline buffer. I think she said 500. Whitney, I'm going to make you go back and listen to that one.
Okay.
I think he said up the hill to the top of the hill, I, was what I recall. Uh, I don't think he said 500, but I could be wrong.
Okay, that's another thing that we will have to go back and check and uh clarify in the final copy of the minute. There any other?
I have a minor question on a reality.
Go ahead.
There's only four members, like we published on it, like that's the, the only four members present. Was it technically a meeting?
Four out of seven?
Yes, because we're seven.
Oh, I thought we were. Okay.
We're seven people.
I thought we needed, I'm wrong. I thought we needed five for four. No.
Yep, okay. Yeah, we were, we were required.
Okay.
Or at least we thought we were.
This, this is the right way to do it regardless.
Yeah.
It's, we were not four.
It would only change the title of the.
Not, it wouldn't change any substance. It would change the title of that. But yes, you're right, we're seven.
And I, I believe we took no actions.
No, no, no. I, I'm not in any way equivalent.
Yeah. What happened? Okay, anything else? Motion from someone, please?
Make a motion that we accept the minutes as is with the one possible check that Whitney's going to do.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Same.
Dave? Um, master planning project, and then we'll circle back to the HOP grant and try to discuss a little bit of the um things that were not resolved when we had um Steve and Mark. So Master Planning Task Force met on Monday of this week. We went over um all of the comments that were made. And we tried to draw some conclusions from that. Uh, on some things, we felt that there was enough response, that it was unified enough that we could draw conclusions. On other things, we felt that there was not enough response um, to be able to draw meaningful conclusions, or there were, you know, two different viewpoints and no clear resolution. Um, and. Um, and Lindsay, who is the co-chair and is also, uh, has a background in doing surveys and statistics. Um, she kind of felt that some demographic data would have been helpful, which I pointed out to our consultants today. And we are going to take a deep dive into that at our next meeting. Um, did I miss anything, Seeley?
No.
Okay, thanks. Uh, let's come back to the HOP grant zoning project, um. I think I'd like to just go through the, the sheet that we went through on screen. And we'll start with the map. Uh, when I came in, Tim was doing some drawing. I haven't even looked at it, but maybe, Tim, you could share with us what you had done on that map this evening?
Um. Well, if, it depends on where, where the board wants to go with the, the lakefront districts. Um, then what I've indicated here is, is more approach to that to try to address the encouragement that we got to increase the boundary beyond just two hundred and fifty feet. And that would be to pull that boundary away from the lake, paying close attention to topography, but also lot lines and trying to find, uh, boundaries that, that were easily recognizable. Kind of made sense in terms of the way the landforms were draining waters. But yet not too far, because, you know, to take things clear to the highland behind the lake, any direction, you're, you're, we wouldn't have much town left.
No, that's for sure.
Yeah, so, you know, where, where do you draw that line? And so I spent some time looking at, not only the zoning map, but the overlay of this map on top of topo maps. And what you can do in the GIS system with the town, you can access right off the, the website. And, uh, so that's kind of what I, I came up with. And you can see, Mass Koma Lake is, in some areas, it's, it's quite a bit wider. Uh, again, I, I don't know that we want to spend a lot of time on this, but why is it around Bud Mill Hill Road and not here? Well, that's because that's fishing game land or it's actually, uh, land trust property. Uh, I think these two parcels are land trusts. Fishing game land, fishing game land. Um, and it would seem to make sense, it kind of falls with everything else we're doing, that we should extend the conservation district down to these boundaries to include all of that. Uh, so you really don't need to go any higher up the hill to Lake District. And if you do that, then you start to run into issues. Well, there's one parcel here, and it's a large parcel owned by a single, uh, private owner, not fishing game. And the six hundred foot contour line runs approximately there. And I would say that we probably should contact that owner and see what his intentions are for that land. He may be actually, you know about it.
Yep, he wants to build a single family home up there, isn't it?
Okay, so he probably wants to maintain that six hundred foot instead of going all the way to behind these lots with the, the, uh, conservation boundary. You know, we probably want to just maintain what we have, right? Doesn't change anything for him. But that brings the lakefront or the lakeshore boundary all the way up to that six hundred foot in there. I mean, that's one thing you could. And as you roll down, you, you come across, um, Lakeview, which is, which of course it's here. Um, probably should catch on both sides of Shaker Boulevard, which shifts the R-three district a little bit to the east. And then up here, what's the name of this road, Rob?
Mass Koma Heights.
Mass Koma Heights.
Yes.
Yeah, the lots on the, uh, sort of west side, southwest side of that are, appear to drain to the lake, as are, of course, all the lots along the lake. You come here, there's a large lot that does seem to have some topo that's more flat up here. And so it might make sense to pick a point, pick a point, bisect that lot. You don't really get much lot by section here, here, and a little bit up, up, up here. And then, um, I just, again, just kind of follow along the line here of, of where the topo kind of made sense. And then we get back up to the, the village district boundaries that we sort of already had determined. And the only difference, um, stands here. Was, is here, what seemed to make sense was go up to that parallel, parallel drive. And, uh, you know, follow those lot boundaries till we get to here, then we kind of need to do a jig because the land doesn't fall off back. But then that corresponds to where we were before with the building. So, Crystal Lake, similar kind of thing. You know, back up to Boys Camp, where does it make sense to follow around the lake? These are.
I, I think you gotta go to Oak Hill. I, I understand your earlier argument that, you know, you're not gonna have much of a town left. But in terms of drainage, we get all the drainage into Crystal Lake from Oak Hill.
Yeah, and, and that's a debate we're gonna have to have. Um, George Pond, I really weren't talking a lot about George Pond, but I, I think that one, kind of similarly, rolls down here to something like this.
Yeah, makes sense.
Um. So if that's just quick shot at a really complicated, time-consuming, difficult thing to turn.
So the, the, the proposed lakeshore zone, all that will really do is allow the select board to make ordinances, ordinances, that those properties that fall into that would have to adhere to, the zoning would stay the same, potentially.
It's not what the, what we were encouraged to think about. What I heard anyway, is in these zones that, um, subdivisions are eliminated. No more of that.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
Yep, that's, that's sure. That was the primary thing.
Yep.
The, the big nut to crack, the one hard to swallow. Um, and I thought about that, drawing those lines around, and you really don't run into that many lots that that's, would be an issue.
Yeah.
Do some.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, as you move up to Oak Hill Road, it should run into a whole lot.
Yeah.
And where, where do you stop? And then the zoning order, the selectmen's ordinances, they can, they can say things like, within five hundred feet of shoreline, the reference line, they don't really have to reference this. And within five hundred feet, you can't have permeable.
Yep.
Impermeable.
Or you gotta go through a stormwater runoff.
Yeah, yeah. But then two hundred and fifty feet is more complicated, so forth. But, anyway, that was just.
Eric, does not if you do anything like that, do they use the number of feet from the shore, or do they?
I, I have not gone through it in detail enough. We only had a portion of it.
Yeah.
And so that's why we'll sort of ask for an analysis of.
Yeah.
Exactly what they've done.
Because it's working.
Well, I mean, last night, I mean, it's one year of data, but they were basically the only big lake in the state that didn't have a bloom last year. Well, that we don't know. We don't, we, that, correct, that's what I'm saying. It's sort of anecdotal, but they were, they had a better result than anyone else.
It's also, from a geologic standpoint, it's a, it's a very rare thing that it's a spring flood.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's unbelievable. They've got a water that comes in from that spring.
Right.
Uh, comes off of Mount Sunapee.
So. So.
So, go ahead.
So, so if I hear you correctly, so part of, because one of the things that becomes a challenge is lot size. It would be that no one would be allowed to subdivide, so therefore you would not have to define a lot size.
Well, if we go ahead in that direction, that would be right.
Okay, then the, I, I'm trying to think it through, because, right, obviously, one of the things that would not work would be to select a lot size for what's existing along the lake, because we don't want them to all be non-conforming. And then allow subdivision like up on, uh, Boys Camp at that, whatever third of an acre is our, all those camps are. Because then you'd make the problem worse.
Yep.
Politically, do you think the town would accept a, an ordinance that says landowners cannot subdivide their land?
I, well, I don't know. Um, my initial suggestion, my, my initial thought would be, right, so what is, so the rules go with the land? They don't go to the landowner?
Right, the rules would go with the land.
Correct.
Correct.
Uh, so to some extent, you want to take into account what current landowners care about, but the rules are for the property, not for.
Yeah.
Right. So my, my initial thought would be, like, I know Cornish did this fifteen years ago, where they changed their lot size in the rural area, and they basically gave everybody a period of time to do any subdivisions under the existing regulations that they were planning to do.
Mm-hmm.
And a number of people did it because they were like, well, we've always been keeping our large lot, we're gonna subdivide it for our kids. And so they gave them the opportunity to do that subdivision before the larger lot size went in. So something along those lines, like a delayed thing. So like, I guess, I mean, you could easily see where somebody on Boys Camp might be thinking, oh, I'm gonna subdivide out five acres for my, my kid in a few years. Uh, that, from a landowner's perspective, that's something that they would lose the ability to do from an individual. The next property owner, they buy it under the rules, they would understand that before they buy it. Uh, it's really only the existing, the current property owners with that, that, that we're in fact.
Then you get the product also that, let's say you bought one of those parcels, that there's an old camp, sketchy septic system. Or maybe it's even a fairly good septic system. You don't know a lot about it, so you're gonna build a new home. Now, if you increase the number of bedrooms, I guess that does immediately dictate what you gotta do for septic, but place the three-bedroom cottage with a three-bedroom mansion. Um. Comment was, you've got to have a septic design, but you don't have to build. I'm not sure I got the snare exactly.
That's, that's. That's what it said.
That's what it says. So that's, that's one thing we might just say, no, you've actually got to build it.
So you may not, so how do occupancy permits work relative to that?
Rob, certificate of occupancy?
Yeah. It seems like that where, that's where that check would happen is.
If, lately, anytime somebody's rebuilding, they, they've got to have a new septic system.
So we may not have that rule understood.
Rebuilding or, or?
Or if you're tearing it down and you're putting up a new one, you gotta put a new septic.
Right, but if you're doing a major renovation back to the studs type of thing, keep what's there.
Guilty.
Keep it.
Yeah, I didn't have to do anything.
Yep.
I should have.
Yeah.
Should have.
Yeah, yeah, and then, so that may be the way after.
Yeah.
And maybe when you're going seasonal, the year round or something.
Now, that strikes me as a zoning, right here. Maybe not a select.
Right, I mean, I, I'd rather see more about the zoning side than, um, for several reasons. Like, as much as possible should be on the zoning side.
Right.
Now, ADUs would apply here because, say, well.
Well, you're right. The choice this board would have would be whether to propose a single ADU in that zone.
But the, but the ADUs are, are, you have to adhere to the septic.
Right.
So I can't put up an ADU because of my septic.
Without a new septic.
But what you guys were just talking about earlier applies with the ADUs. If you want to add the ADU, you have to have the system designed to take the extra, uh, capacity.
Right.
But you don't have to build it.
But see, see, that's the thing.
It's kind of like money in the bank, so to speak.
So basically, you really should. I think the zoning law should require.
So the legal is that, is that a zoning?
Yeah, sure. Nope, that's not zoning.
It strikes me as odd that you could have an occupancy permit without your septic being permitted, right?
It's a septic.
We don't force inspections, right?
Anywhere.
State, it's state, the state will, on, uh, when it's changing hands, it's supposed to be.
When it's changing hands, it's supposed to be inspected.
Yep, there's an RSA on that. So, and it's the DES that's dealing with the septic. And they may, I don't know, I mean.
So for.
That would be the lawyer's question. Can we do more septic regs?
For new development, the, the state is really good. I mean.
Yep.
I just went through that. Very good, and they know what they're doing.
Yeah.
But for redevelopment, which is what we're talking about around the lakes, it's loose, and that's where all the problems.
And that's what drives me crazy is that, you know, for, for building a new house, you gotta go through all these hoops.
Yeah.
But for an old house, they let you go fifty, sixty years without touching it.
Yeah.
And that's what we got. I mean, I just had a builder in my place today that tore down a place on, uh, Beddo Lane, Mass Koma Lake. And it was a fifty-five gallon drum with an outlet that flowed right into a little stream. That's what they pulled out of the system. And luckily, when they rebuilt that, when they built a new house there, he actually had the directional boring done and hooked up to our four A sewer. So huge win there for us.
Right, but I mean, that exists all over.
It's all over the place.
All over the place.
Oh, yeah. I, I have it on good authority, there's a buried Volkswagen Beetle septic system in, in Enfield.
Really?
Yeah. So, board member, imagine, um, I put in the window.
For me, this points out why I got a little upset early in the part of the meeting. We are not gonna be able to crack this nut this fall. I just don't see how we can spend the time. It's gonna be required. Number one, figure out that boundary. And I, that's a, just a cool tabletop exercise, but I think we need to go, you know, line by line, and look at the topo maps, make sure it all makes sense. You know, that takes time. Um, what are we gonna put in this district, or what are the priorities gonna be?
There's some things that we, we have agreed are good improvements, so we'll go with what we've done that we agree with. And then the next year.
I'm not sure what we've agreed, agreed with. You know, each one of those things is gonna, gonna demand an hour's worth of back and forth. And unless we can workshop this thing somehow on, on some daytime periods, um, I, I'm just coming to the conclusion that persuaded that we're, what we need to do for March twenty-five, we're gonna have to back off and simplify what we're actually gonna propose. I don't like the rural district. I've made that clear a number of times for lots of reasons. I don't think the R-three and R-five accomplishes really what we want to preserve the rural character. The, uh, stopped at the lakefront, the conservation, pretty simple. I think we need to focus on the village. I just, I mean, we could put this up as a proposed district and call it preserved. So it's in, it's in the map, but really doesn't have anything written on it yet, and take it up next year. Um, I've seen that in a couple of local ordinances where they're thinking about doing something and wanted to have a preserve chapter done with it. And my apologies to resilience, I didn't mean to jump, I wasn't jumping down their throats, although somewhat, but but, you know, just, just look at what we were given tonight. How the heck are we gonna debate these topics?
Understood.
Almost eight thirty.
And, and I agree with you, but I think one of the things that we have to realize as a board is that this stuff is hard. And it's confusing, and it, it takes a tremendous amount of debate, and it's not gonna happen quickly. And we're gonna have a lot of discussions, and we're gonna back up and go over it. It's gonna take a long time. And to your point, we need to figure out, and we've always known this, right? We need to figure out what we're gonna present to the town for the, for March. And it probably won't include. Most of what, what we need to do, we're just not gonna have the time. Uh, I'd like to see. A, a lake zone proposed, uh, because I think the. Ground swell is there in the town for it, and I think we should jump at that, but to Tim's point. It's a ton of time to draw that line and to get it right. And, and, and you're gonna have to another have probably more sessions with the lake people or, or the public in general to talk about it. Everybody's gonna have. One a second.
And just to make sure everybody on the same page. We don't have to take. Everything or anything that is the work product from the HOP grant and put it before the town. So, we're gonna get. Work product.
Bring in product.
We're gonna get work product.
Yeah.
That's going to satisfy.
The grant.
The HOP grant people.
Yeah.
We may or may not get a second round of HOP grant funding for. You know, fall of this year and on into twenty twenty-five. But we will have satisfied the terms of the grant, and that will give us. Some sort of a starting point. And as we move into the October, November timeframe. We can decide. What is in the work product that we feel is worthwhile to go to the public with in March? And we'll probably have, you know, one or two public meetings. Um, before we have the official. Language that we're gonna have our official public hearing on. And we'll just kinda see where we are, I mean, you guys, Brad in particular. Remember that. Probably what, last June or July, whenever it was, that we were. Starting this, we had a lot bigger. Aspiration. And as our previous consultants decamped or. Wherever it is they went, New Zealand. And we found ourselves short on time and lacking a professional planner. We were, you know, we were almost at the point where we're, we were throwing up our hands and saying, we're gonna have nothing.
I, I think at some point, and, and maybe it's after we get the product. This board needs to decide. What are the top three priorities, how we're gonna work those going forward? What, what is the most, and make them small, right, or smaller?
Baby steps.
Baby steps.
Yeah.
And we need to figure out what that is, and then dedicate all of our available time onto the first one until we get it done and get it right. And then get it to the town proposal. And it, it may be, it will take several years. Roll.
Yeah, I. I think you're right, and I think that. Needs to be, I mean, we could, we could tweak the R ones, two and, or R one, three and five with some of the housing. Adjustments there. Even though I'd have. Bringing up a little bit of potential for some additional housing.
Mm-hmm. I, I think one of the things that we've learned from the sessions that we had is that there's not much of an appetite to change R three, R five, and R one.
Certainly not the bounds.
Right, yeah, the bounds is what I meant.
Yeah.
Right, and people were very skittish about that, and we've gotta listen to them, or be able to convince them otherwise.
Yeah.
Whereas on the, on the, the Lakeshore Zone, I think that there's a ground swell, we should probably grab it while we can.
Yeah.
Just my thoughts.
I, I think your analysis is correct.
So. That seems to me that, that's gonna take a. Call it a task force. You know, a couple of planning board members who wanna work on that, and some people from the Lake Association, meet regularly. There's enough. Horsepower there, I imagine they'd be able to. Perhaps even fund a consultant. You know, work on that issue over the next year.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I, I think a large part of, of the direction in the. You know, one year to two or three-year timeframe depends on. Whether we have a planning consultancy to work with. Or we don't. And, you know, clearly, the budget that we put together for. Our HOP grant, phase one, was. Small. And they're, they're telling us that they're looking for proposals. That are almost twice the dollar volume of what we had proposed.
And, and, and it wasn't optimal, right, it was last minute, it was hurry up, it.
Yeah.
You know, we were in a, a difficult situation, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
But, you know, I, I think we're gonna get some usable things out of the work products. And as, as Tim and, and Brad suggest, we pick one or two or three. And we work on them between the time that we receive the work product and the end of the year. And we bring force to town meeting those things that we feel comfortable with. And we leave the rest for another round, once we determine the parameters of our phase two. Guys feel? That's a good way to go, Phil?
I mean, I think baby steps is a good idea, and I think the most important one is water protection right now for the town, that's, that's a big issue. That we're finding out.
Yeah.
Maybe. Working what, what, what Tim's working on, figure out what that boundary is, what, and try to get a consensus from the. The lake dwellers out there as to what those boundaries should be. And then work that one first, and then, and then move on to the, to the village, and then move on to, you know, take them. One step at a time.
Yeah, well, I think in terms of the village and the housing piece, I think we, I think what we're gonna get from them is gonna allow us to go to the town for the village. We're gonna have to do some work on it, of course, but I think that that's probably further down the path of completion than, than this. Um, but I think we could follow closely with this.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I agree with you, Rich, I, I, I just think the. You know, the, the, the clear direction in the master plan to increase the housing density in the village. While keeping the character of the village, you know, carefully gotta do that. Uh, and, and the housing crisis that we have in the Upper Valley. Um, I believe that really is where our priorities should be. And I personally wanna be the, on, well, I mean, I would, I will work. Exclusively on the village issue over the next few months. If someone wants to take on organizing the lakefront side. I, it can't be me, I can't do both.
Any volunteers?
Well, I'll certainly contribute, um, but I think that you, you, you've gotta get a subset of the people that were here the other week.
Yeah, and you, you've gotta narrow it down to a, a working group.
Yeah, it's gonna be a miniature, uh, uh. Master plan type of deal and what to it, and you'll get a lot of participation, and, uh, I think a lot of those people are gonna learn a lot of things.
Yeah.
As we have.
And I think there's state resources that will help, help that effort. I think the lake associations are a great resource to tap as well.
Oh, huge.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll take public comments in a little bit, okay? Eric, any thoughts?
Well, I think in terms of the next nine months, priority would be the village, to get something in front of the voters in March.
Yeah.
So I think that would be the, the topic, and this, we are gonna get a lot of information, and we're gonna have to figure out overlays and.
Yeah.
Or whatever for the specifics, but I think that'd be the priority one. You know, if it's gonna be a couple of years, I could certainly help work with Brad. On the Lake District. Particularly because that's gonna be more complicated than just zoning. That's another thing we need to make sure we're, we're thinking about, that's gonna have some health order. You know, health regulations, it might have some. Other regulations that aren't zoning, but. You know, trying to, trying to get as much of it, I think, I think the zoning and the site plan review is sort of.
Yeah, the, the.
A key to that.
The zone is sort of facilitates everything else.
Right.
But, but getting that zone determined is gonna be.
Right.
But also, you know, what, what, what do people really want to have happen, and then which avenue is the appropriate one to make? The half a dozen things.
Mm-hmm.
Happened.
Absolutely, Linda, any thoughts? You wanna contribute?
Well, um. I don't disagree with any of this, but. Over time, we've had an awful lot of things that we did agree on, and things that we saw that didn't make sense, that we should. Update to reality today, so I think we've made more progress, it's just that the pile got bigger.
Yeah, we have.
So we've made a lot of progress, and those things we can put forward, and they can go on the ballot in March.
I, I think you're, I think you're right, that we, we have done more than we're. Recognizing tonight, and, uh, what we need to do is. Go back through. Minutes or videos or our memories, our notes. And isolate those items that we did reach consensus on. And work on getting those items presentable for public consumption. Whitney, any thoughts?
Not really anything additional, I would agree that the Village District is something that would be feasible for town meeting point twenty-five, and. Continuing to work on the Lake Districts is something that's exciting for a lot of folks who have a lot of water, water quality concerns, so, same.
Okay, so for the immediate future, at our next meeting in July. Uh, is our first meeting the one when we're meeting with the historical?
Yes.
Heritage.
Yes, heritage, I'm sorry. So we'll spend some time, uh, Linda, do you think a half an hour or forty-five minutes, hour, what do you think would be sufficient? Since you're part of that group?
I can let you know tomorrow, tomorrow.
Okay.
Because there's a meeting tomorrow.
All right.
Prepare for it.
Um.
Can you give us a hint as to what the topic is gonna be?
Is it, I think, my understanding is the two groups working together?
Right.
Which two groups?
The, the Heritage Commission and the Planning Board was, was my, uh.
Oh, yeah.
They're, they're both, they're both officially Land Use Board.
Right.
And.
They complement each other.
We can't have, you know, them going in one direction and us going in the opposite direction. So. They approached us and said, we'd like to have a sit-down with you. And figure out ways and areas in which we should cooperate. So that everybody's on the same page, and I said, that is great. Um, we'll schedule it for our first work session in July, so we'll spend, um. Can I say up to an hour? If it's less, that will be less. Uh, on that, and then we will spend the remainder of our time on Village District. And hopefully there won't be any. Public hearings.
You have public hearings at the second meeting?
Second meeting is fine. But it looks like we need to go back to our script, uh. First meeting of the month is board work session, and second meeting of the month. Uh, our priority is doing the board's business of public hearings, and then if there's time. Then we. Continue working on specific, uh, zoning issues. So that's the way I see the next few months going, uh, although. We will have to spend some time a month from now, when we get our final, uh, work product. From Steve and Mark.
How many hearings to this point for July?
You got one site plan review and I think two. Lot murders, lot murders are.
Lot murders or nothing? Which site plan are we gonna be doing, can you tell us? Is there an application in? To build the weeds?
I'll just give you one word.
B.
Yeah, oh, one letter, there you go.
Okay.
One word is B.
Excellent, excellent.
All right, um, before we go, I saw somebody had a hand up, a couple of people had hands up, so let's take some public input.
Rex Brown, fifty-one Main Street, I've been a tax payer roughly, what, twenty-five years or so. And I've heard a lot of budget committees going out and finding out what, what our town's gonna be like. But when they left, everybody forgot about it, another budget planner come in, this is where our town's gonna be like, they left. Now you guys are starting all over again, could you go back and dig up maybe five years of what the good stuff was? And all those meetings that they came up with, say, hey, this is what we think the town needs.
We should have gotten that from the master plan.
We, we did a master planning process.
But you guys did it, but how about a few back?
Well, the, the previous master plan was twenty-four years ago.
Okay, all right.
So going back to that document, we found very unhelpful.
We actually read it.
We did, many of us did.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, I, I feel that from twenty. Eighteen or nineteen, when we started the process. To twenty, the fall of twenty-two, was it?
Yeah.
When we adopted the plan. We had an awful lot of input from a significant number of people in the town. And.
There, there was probably over twenty different sessions, if you included everything.
Yeah.
That we talked to people about.
No, I'm just curious if, if anybody stopped and looked back, I mean.
Yeah, we did.
We did, my ancestors were here, when they made rules up, they walked in with a gun and a case of whiskey and came out with.
Yeah, yeah, we, we did, but, but not a lot of it was, uh, applicable, uh, to something recent.
Yeah, what people want changed.
And do you have something in mind particularly that, that?
No, 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 I just see a lot of time being beat up on, you know, you're beating up this one, that one. It's like, hey, you know, somebody's already done this study once in the last twenty years anyway, okay, what did they come up with?
And, and during the master plan, we floundered. I mean, there were points where we floundered, like we messed it up a little bit, um, and then you're just gonna get, you're gonna keep pushing.
Yeah, we were flummoxed and floundered and didn't know which.
Yeah.
Which direction the people of the town really wanted to go.
Yeah.
And when we reached that kind of a point, we.
Yeah.
We backed off and we put our heads together and we asked people from town for more input. And by the time we got to our final public hearing. I think everybody was in favor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can remember one person that objected to one part of it, that was it, thank you, Dr. Buffet.
The, I think, I think probably everybody in this room, um. Was there, almost everybody for the, um, Lake President's, uh, public hearing. Um, up there, up and a half ago, um, and can, uh, agree that it would give very success. Um, I've pitched to David and a couple of other, you've heard about it, um, that. Sooner rather than later, um, a similar process, um, looking at the village presidents, um, be, um, pursued. Um, vigorously, um, because I think that there is, um. Quite a lot of disagreement from people I know with my, uh, with the, your, you know, urban planner, um, high-density, um, consultants. Uh, compared to.
I, I think that's a great idea, but, but I think one of the things that, that we have to talk about first in that session is, okay, the master plan said we need higher density. And that, that, we didn't make that up.
But at, at the, at the, uh, at the master planning meeting on Tuesday, said. We, these are advisory, we don't have no enforcement process. And that came from the. We don't have no enforcement process. And that came from the chair.
And, and so if, if we do not want to follow the master plan, that's fine, because the people get to, that, right?
The people that live there may not.
They may not, right? So if, if, if the master plan was wrong, then all of the surveys and all of the work that we did was wrong. That's fine. People change their minds, but, but we're gonna have to admit that, okay, we got it wrong. And the master plan needs to be updated to the new reality.
Starting with what the master plan says and what the proposals for, you know, zero setbacks, fifteen, sixteen, twelve, whatever. Units on my, uh, property, size of my property or yours or, or the, the post office. Are, are, you know, totally out of line with what the expectations impose of us.
And we can have that conversation once we have a starting point. Um, we've got our planning consultants. They're gonna work on their deliverables. The board will look at that and then we will, we will decide amongst us. What is good from the deliverables, what's not so good and what's absolutely unacceptable. We'll edit it. And then when we have a document or a series of documents. That we feel confident we can present to the people who live in the village. And to the whole town, then we'll start gathering more input. And that, that's, that's why I told you that's not gonna happen until early fall.
And, and fall's a reasonable time because people are not gonna be, are, are gonna be doing that. But I think that, um, the. These don't expect to have a final product that, that, that just gets stopped down, uh, get early.
This has to be driven by the public. It has to be driven by the residents. We can't do anything. That where the majority of people are not saying this is the direction we should take.
If we have a final product that gets stopped down by the public. We all should pack up our notebooks and laptops and whatever else and go home. Because that is, our, our job is to present something to the public. That we feel very confident the public will be willing to accept when they go to the polls. In March and say yay or nay.
Almost presented at that poster session.
There, there were absolute errors. There were, there were.
Okay, but you guys are responsible for making sure that there aren't errors.
And there was.
And, and, and you set up people like me who try to be reasonable, um, to, you know, saying. What else is in there? Do I have to take down not just one layer or three layers, but ten layers? Find out what really you mean and what your consultants mean.
It, it's all gonna be in writing. It's gonna be in black and white. And, and we, I, I, I agree with you that it's, some of the stuff is misleading. But it's all gonna be in black and white. There's no, there's no agenda to try to push something through. What, what we're trying to do is live to the master plan, right? Of, of what it says and what the desire is, and it's, it's multifaceted. And then we're gonna present something after we get the work product from the, the consultants and say, here it is. What do you think? What do you think?
What I've seen, I don't like.
You haven't seen, you haven't seen a thing?
I've been attending these meetings recently too.
Yeah, so, but it's, it's, it's gonna get there. You're, you're gonna have.
That was unfortunate.
It was unfortunate. You're gonna have ample opportunity to shape this the way you want or not, or completely.
I'm okay to be in opposition too and, and, and to, but I think that, uh, the earlier you get. Um, resident of the village, um, input, the more valid any. Approach that you take will be. Let this get toward of the pike, you're, you're gonna lose because of that lack of input.
At, at some point in the very, very near future, that pike ends. The consultants deliver their final product and it comes to an abrupt halt. After that, we take over. As I previously stated, we look at it, we make changes, whether they're minor tweaks or throwing out. Entire sections, I don't know, because I haven't seen their work product yet. Um, and remember, we meet twice a month. As a volunteer board. And while I would like.
Currently, the first meeting next in July is the one that they'll be presenting?
No, second meeting.
Second meeting, a month from now. And we'll, you know, we'll see what they come up with, um. The, this, the posters and printed material for that session were put together very, very quickly. And, you know, the board kind of had it flashed on the screen, basically. Before it went to print. So, yeah, there were errors in that.
We didn't do ourselves any favors.
Agreed.
Dave, there's a question from the public?
Yeah, well, I just wanted to support his vote that communications happen sooner than later. Because as a resident of Main Street, I can tell you the pushback has already started. So, you know, the longer you wait, there's a wave that's already started. And I just FYI. It's Megan, M-E-G-A-N, right, party fifty-one Main Street. Anyway, I just, I'm warning you, there's a wave in motion.
Uh, I, I would like to see the full wave.
You will.
I'm sure we will. Really?
Yes. Um, I, a couple of things. Maybe not, cause I'm losing my, my order. I have ADD in case you're real like this. But, um, you've been all talking about zoning. We've been talking about forever. And, and Rob was talking about the ZBA. Uh, meeting the other night where they approved these, um. Variances. And I was very upset about it and I told them I was. And Rob just reminded, said something to me that, um, that there's ready, zoning is out of this now. You know, they're ready. They got their, this is what I think you said, Rob. They got their two variances. They got what they need. They got one more. And then that's the zoning. But this is where they make the mistake. Is that zoning is land use. And it's a land in this town that will direct where go, what goes where and how much. You've got your steep slopes, you've got your soils, you've got your streams, you've got your rivers, you've got your wetlands. Enfield is pulling it. And it's always been that way. There's nothing anybody could do except ruin it. And if they ruin it, they'll ruin the best resources they have. So I'm just saying, think about. The land. And with it, like, for example, the building going up on top of a ridge. They're gonna plow through everything. They're gonna dig down in, on, on rock. And to bring the thing up, I mean, that's not good land use. And that's not what the people, the town. We have a spirit of the ordinance that's very big in getting a, a variance. And it's what the people, the welfare, the happiness, safety of people. That's all involved. It all encompasses what we, what the goals are in zoning. You know, the zoning is the worst word, world, word in the world. I hated it from the beginning. It's land use. How do we use our land the best way? How do we protect our resources? And I think you gotta start, when you're doing your zones, you've gotta start looking at what's there. What do people really like? I like looking at all the hills with no lights on it. But then when they start putting their lights up, it's no, it loses the whole thing. So, you know. You gotta think, just, that's what I did as an old ZBA member. I just, uh, I was just overwhelmed with the way the, the thinking was. And I'd like to see you guys not make the same mistake. So that's my big speech for guys.
Well, where, if and when, you know, there, there's nothing that we can do. About the decision that the zoning board made.
I know.
I'm not gonna say whether I agree or disagree or say that it was handled properly or improperly. That's not my place. But when it comes to, if and when it comes to us. It will get a thorough review. We have specific criteria. There's probably at least twenty or thirty of them that we will go over every single one. And we will make sure that as a board, we are satisfied. That all of those criterias in the site plan ordinance are satisfied.
I believe that, but in, in addition, you're writing the zoning orders. And, you know, you, I know it's hard to draw the lines. I mean, there's something everywhere. So it's, it's not easy.
Very difficult. Really is.
But I'm thinking, well, maybe Enfield can have, you know, the, the density that the area is pushing. You know, that these regional planning commissions are doing. They don't have Enfield. I mean, they don't have what we have. And it's a whole different ballgame out here. So think of that, you know, you don't have to do anything really. But you know what would be great? You know what they want? Work for, for housing. With all the grants we get, why don't we go for a grant to build our own workforce housing?
Because workforce housing gives you, with a grant, you get four or five units in a, in a town like this. And you say, great, we, we just solved our problem. No, we haven't. We need hundreds. You know, you, you can't grant your way out of these kind of issues.
Well, it's, it's better than, you know, funding eight hundred people to the town and it's like that.
That's where my question comes in. It's like, where are all those kids gonna go to school? I mean, looking at the big picture.
Okay, we're, we're, we're getting into a conversation that we cannot enter into. Because we are, we are likely to have this application before us. And any conversation that we have that is not in the presence of the applicant. And is not in a warned public hearing is not the way we are going to proceed. Because it's called ex parte communication. But I also think the comment was not that specific to, to Larry. Uh, in general, you're talking about increased density in the house and more people, more population, of course. The master plan says in fact that our share of the upper valley shortage of housing. Is two hundred housing units by twenty-third.
You hope?
No, 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 it's. That, that is region wide. Enfield's hopeful share of that is two hundred units. By twenty-hundred.
And David, just a point of order, um, public comment was warned. Any response that you make perhaps may be limited, but what we could say, not.
I, I, I would agree with that. And that's why I am saying that the board is not gonna respond to that comment. Okay, we'll take one from Sharon and it's five minutes of nine and we'll make that the last comment.
It's late. I will try to keep, I wanna say thank you first of all. I know this is an impossible job. I know it's huge. I know there's many variables. What I saw happen tonight, and I appreciate the most, was I saw you guys slow the process down. Realize what you can accomplish and what you can maybe bite off in pieces. Over time and build consensus in one location at a time. So I think that was very favorable because this is a very personal issue. And I think that the inherent problem is anybody who votes for, sure. Put the density right down the fourth quarter. That's fine because I live someplace else. It's not gonna affect me. And maybe I don't have to drive on Route Four every day and get through that traffic. That is, that development is going to bring. So if it doesn't affect people personally, they're gonna vote these zoning changes in. They won't care. The people who do care are the people who live in residential neighborhoods on Maple Street and Main Street. And may have, uh, originally in this document, it was going to be a fifty, a five-story building. Next to two-story houses. We know this is wrong. I'm glad it's wrong. But I really think that people need to have, from, I'm just gonna go a little bit into the master plan. The master plan is very broad. I misread the master plan to say. Maybe there's only two hundred houses that Enfield needs to have over the next ten years. Well, we're gonna have way more than that upon development on the hill. So we're done. We're done and our responsibility to that. Let's build that and possibly. And see what happens as a result. Because what I'm really afraid of. First of all, what it says in the master plan, this is a quote on page eleven. Preserving the environment and character of this small town is important to me. This was an, an individual that they quoted. But people in town need jobs and services in order to help the times, to care and get involved. We need more than just a bedroom community here that people are gonna move into a house and then drive someplace else. We need people, and we need more than apartments, that people aren't really gonna value and wanna stay in, that people are gonna move away from. We need involvement in our town. Um, so some growth in development may be necessary to meet long-term goals. Yes. Now, I really appreciate Tim, what you said, is as little change as we can to increase the housing. Increase some housing, but don't start if you, right now, what the ZBA did. By allowing a seventy-five foot building, they opened the door for the next developer to come in and to inspect that. Do we want, you know, I feel really pressured about all of this development along the fourth corridor. I think we're gonna shoot ourselves in the foot because yes, it makes sense. That's where our water and sewer is. But we want walkable communities. You can't walk along Route Four. And okay, you're gonna have a, an Egress Road from that development out onto the end of Maple Street. A mile away from downtown services. That's not a walkable community. That's a recreation path if somebody chooses to use it, but that's not the definition of a walkable community. So let's not pretend that. And, and I just think it's really unfair to focus all the development. On, uh, along the Route Four corridor that's gonna extend into residential neighborhoods. And, and sure, we'll sell our houses. Sure, some developer will come in and because you have zoning. With no setbacks and, and so on and so forth, if you allow that. We're gonna be one house with tall buildings all around us. You know, I mean, I just see Enfield as like he drives through town and you're all of a sudden buying. Five-story buildings all over the place. Um, maybe some people want that, but it's, it will ruin the community that we have.
I don't think anybody expects Enfield to go that way. I really don't.
When I read the master plan, they talked about, oh, along the good fourth corridor. I don't know who developed the wording. Who developed the wording for the master plan, they talked about of the developable land and also of um. You know, kind of redeveloping things that are already developed. Ten thousand new units were possible that they estimated along the fourth corridor. When I read that, I was like, holy cow, is this really in somebody's vision? That we're gonna have this type of pressure, you know, like. You can't say one thing.
Sharon, that's a theoretical maximum, you know, it's.
But it's in our master plan, so somebody's gonna take that.
Pay attention to some parts of the master plan and not others, I mean.
No.
That's scary, I'm very.
It's, it's just kind of where Enfield could go, if these guys, if you accept what they say. And sure, you accept front setback, none, other setbacks, none. Fifty height, five-story maximum, residential density, twelve dwelling units per acre. Impervious surface coverage, seventy percent maximum, I know this is wrong, but it came from somebody's mind. As to this is plausible, we don't want our community to be like this. That's not small rural character. That's a city, like I could move and live in the middle of Lebanon if I wanted to, I don't.
I I would agree and. Again, not to beat the horse to death, what we get as a work product. Is something that we are going to delve into and we're gonna pick out the good parts. And modify the iffy parts and throw out the bad parts. And my guess is that what gets presented to the town. Is going to be very different from what we get as a work product. And we're gonna take the time to listen to you and to listen to the people who live on Main Street. And on Maple Street and to listen to people. Who live in other parts of the town and try to come to some sort of a consensus. As we did with the master plan. But it's not gonna happen overnight. It's a long process.
Well, thank you for slowing it down and thank you for taking it one piece at a time.
And and thank you for taking a sometimes thankless job. And giving us your thank you, I really appreciate that.
Amen.
David, I'd like to make a motion.
Second.
What is your motion, Linda Jones?
Motion, you said, we adjourned.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. We are adjourned, uh somewhere running.
Thank you, everybody, that was a good meeting.
Hey, Tim, I will work with you on the village.
Nice to meet you.
I've got a vested interest. Well, that turns out, so I got eighteen acres in the village.
Yeah, yeah, um.
We're gonna have to.
My chair.
Fast forward workshop, so.
Thank you.
And I talked to a town manager today. We had the silver.